All right, thanks AJ. I'm gonna call the the city council work session to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Councillor Pitts.
Here.
Mo.
Here.
Rodley.
Here.
Stare.
Here.
Woodrow.
Here.
And Pictionary.
I'm here, thank you.
All right, we have two items tonight for work session and it the first one looks like the Main Street Safety Project, the Facility Plan Update with Molly. So I'm gonna turn it over to Molly and Brian and let them take us from here.
Evening. I'm going to share my screen and then minimize all of you. So I hope Brian can let me know if anyone waves their hand.
I'm ready.
Good evening, I'm Molly Marcarion, Senior Planner and the City's Project Manager for the Main Street Safety Project. As you all, I'm sure, recall, this is a collaborative effort between the City of Springfield and ODOT. And Bill Johnston, ODOT's Project Manager, is going to be joining us tonight. I also have several members of our project team in attendance and then Brian Barnett, our City Traffic Engineer. Tonight, I'm going to start by bringing you up to speed on the project since we last met in May. And then review the draft facility plan with an emphasis on Chapter 4, which is the Toolbox of Safety Solutions, and Chapter 5, which covers implementation of the plan. I'll also cover our recommended changes to the development code to enable implementation of the plan and share common themes for feedback that we heard from the community on the draft plan earlier this fall. And then, of course, hand it over to you for questions, comments, and feedback. I always like to start our presentations with the purpose statement to help remind us why we're all here. The purpose of the Main Street Safety Project is to select infrastructure solutions that will make Main Street safer for people walking, biking, driving, and taking transit. As a reminder, we sought feedback from the community early on in the process. There we go. And the community shared with us their priorities for Main Street and that helped inform our development of goals and objectives. And in turn, our project evaluation criteria, analysis of solutions, and the development of our safety solution toolbox. The Main Street Safety Project is recommending changes to Main Street to help improve safety and address the specific type of crashes that we that occur on Main Street. We see a high percentage of rear end and turning movement crashes on the corridor, which are common on urban streets with a high number of driveways and intersections. But 80%, which we see on Main Street, is particularly high. Our data shows that the primary causes of crashes are failure to yield right-of-way and following too closely. On the slide that I just had up, the bar graph noted that while 93% of crashes on Main Street don't involve people walking or biking, all crashes on Main Street result in some level of property damage from minor to major, as shown on the figure on the left. However, pedestrian-involved crashes are more likely to result in severe injury or fatality. As you can see in the diagram at the right, about 75% of fatal crashes involved people walking. Some people have asked whether there are specific areas on the corridor that see more crashes than others. As you can see on this map, crashes occur throughout all of Main Street and thus why we really need a corridor-wide solution. Over the past three-plus years, our project team has been refining solutions based on community input, technical analysis, and city council feedback. This spring, the Planning Commission, the Main Street Governance Team, and the City Council acknowledged community input from our third round of community engagement and confirmed that the draft Toolbox recommendations met their expectations and direction to date, including addressing safety on Main Street, recommending implementation of infrastructure elements with a balanced approach to improve safety and support business and economic development on the corridor, and presenting recommendations with a Toolbox approach that is simple, flexible, and can be implemented gradually in phases. At your May 10th work session, you directed our project team to proceed with developing the draft facility plan, which we did this summer in collaboration with our Technical Advisory Committee. As noted in our May 6th e-update to our Interested Parties list, during the third round of community engagement, we heard some misconceptions about what this project is or is not. As you all are well aware, there is a long history of projects on Main Street and there are many business and property owners who engaged early on and may not have tracked the evolution of Main Street planning since then. The rumors that we are working to dispel about the recommended toolbox are addressed in more detail in Fact Sheet #5, which can be found on our project website. And hopefully someone in our project team can put that in the chat either now or during the discussion. Moving on to the draft facility plan. As you may recall, it pulls together the technical analysis, the feedback from outreach, and the design concepts developed during this planning phase. It's an expression of community values. It designs a framework for project delivery and signals to ODOT and the city to begin seeking funding or detailed design and construction. It also refines the Springfield Transportation System Plan. The draft facility plan is divided into five chapters with a roadmap at the beginning to guide readers. Chapter 1, Introduction, covers the history of planning projects on Main Street and the policy context that guided this planning phase. It describes the project process and decision-making structure and highlights levels of community outreach and participation. Chapter 2, Main Street Needs, describes the existing and future transportation needs on the corridor and is organized according to the project goals. It reiterates the serious safety problem that has persisted on Main Street and it reflects business-community characteristics, including a description of the number and type of businesses on the corridor, common site usage and access concerns expressed by businesses, and it summarizes the key findings from our literature review examining economic impacts from similar projects with raised medians and roundabouts. Chapter 3, The Solutions Development and Evaluation Process, describes just that and also describes why some solutions were considered but may not have been chosen for inclusion in the Toolbox in Chapter 4. No, I don't want. The Toolbox approach described in Chapter 4 was informed by community feedback and a desire for flexibility, simplicity, and feasibility. The primary tools are roundabouts, raised medians, and long-term street cross-section upgrades to enhance the safety and comfort of those walking and biking. There's an aspect of each tool that does not promote one-size-fits-all approaches, and I'll note that as we go through each tool. We analyzed roundabouts and traffic signals at all major intersections on the corridor. Roundabouts fared better and were more aligned with the community goals, including making Main Street safer for those walking, biking, driving, and taking transit. Adjustments made at the time of design will be tailored to each intersection, an example of it not being a one-size-fits-all approach. Another key tool are raised medians, as they would be the greatest contributor to improve safety on Main Street. They reduce major turning conflicts and move turns to safer locations. If you recall from the beginning of the slideshow, one of the primary causes of crashes on Main Street are turning movement crashes. When medians are combined with roundabouts, we could see an even greater crash reduction, closer to 48%. With raised medians, we are taking the balanced safety and access approach and limiting out-of-direction travel to 30 to 60 seconds on average, which is approximately how long it takes drivers to turn left at busy times from the turn lane and at traffic signals. The community also said this would be an acceptable trade-off. Medians can also make pedestrian crossings safer and are overall aligned with the project purpose statement. We developed a set of guiding principles to inform the design process and where openings would be located in the medians along the corridor. This is an example for the median tool where we are not taking a one-size-fits-all approach. The third major tool in the Toolbox are upgrades to the street cross-sections to improve the safety and comfort of bicycles and pedestrians in the long term. Three base cross-sections would be applied as appropriate to provide design options and flexibility for phasing and areas with constrained width. In the diagrams on the right-hand side of the slide, I just wanted to point out that the existing right-of-way is shown in gray at the bottom of each cross-section. We have short-term and long-term recommendations, an example of how we responded to the community's desire for gradual implementation. In the short term, we recommend keeping the cross-section much like it is today to allow for medians to be put in quickly, as raised medians would have the biggest impact on safety while having less interruption to travel on Main Street. The constrained width cross-section, the top cross-section, doesn't change the curb-to-curb width and primarily would exist to enable phasing so we can postpone or delay the other widths to get in the safety element sooner due to the right-of-way costs associated with additional width. The long-term cross-sections, the balanced street width and the active transportation-enhanced cross-section are aligned with the purpose statement and the goal of supporting transportation options. The balanced street width cross-section in blue would be applied in the long term to most of the corridor and includes buffered bike lanes and a slightly wider median, resulting in an additional four feet of width on each side of the street. The active transportation-enhanced cross-section in green is proposed to be located where we already have wider existing right-of-way and fewer driveway conflicts. There, we recommend a cycle track next to the sidewalk. Potential modifications to each cross-section are provided to offer flexibility in design to better fit corridor opportunities and constraints. The three base cross-sections for short and long-term implementation plus the segment-specific modifications reflect a flexible approach, not one-size-fits-all. The principal sections of Chapter 5 cover how the Toolbox can be implemented and how to use the plan to inform the design process. The section of Chapter 5 that is of most interest to folks is usually the phasing plan. Construction of the full facility plan could take beyond 20 years to complete. So all solutions will be implemented in phases due to limited funding availability. To help you navigate this figure, the circles reflect roundabouts. The dash line only indicates the short-term cross-section, the constrained width cross-section. The dash line with outside solid lines indicates the long-term cross-section, either the balanced width or the active transportation-enhanced. And the cloud represents the study of the interchange area and that is paired with a later phase for implementation. Key factors that we considered in developing the phasing plan include safety, high-crash locations and potential benefit-to-cost ratios, feasibility, considering right-of-way and other constraints, and targeting the phases to $10 million or less. Functionality, pairing the raised medians with roundabouts to limit out-of-direction travel. Inconsistency, targeting adjacent segments and coordination with other projects, including utility relocation and transit upgrades. The first phase does have a higher price tag, but we are looking for a full, comprehensive first phase to showcase what the project can be. Some people have asked if we could do Phase 1 with just one roundabout. Of course, we'll do the most that we can with the resources available and operationally, we could make it work. But to keep out-of-direction travel to 30 to 60 seconds on average and minimize the need for freight to loop around the city, we really do need both roundabouts in the first phase. We also know that public perception and satisfaction with the first phase will be a strong influencer on support for later phases. So ideally, we'd like to make the first phase complete and functional for all, including freight. This figure builds upon the prior diagram and shows in color the later phases. In gray are the previous four phases. Our project team evaluated the Springfield Comprehensive Plan, the Transportation System Plan, and the Springfield Development Code to ensure that policies and standards reflect the recommendations of the draft Main Street Facility Plan. Tech Memo 18 provides a high-level summary of changes needed, while Tech Memo 19 gets into details of recommended modifications to language in the Springfield Comprehensive Plan and the Springfield Development Code. The Tech Memo recommends amendments in Chapter 5 of the Transportation System Plan and suggests updates to the preface and other administrative sections that would not be amendments but are recommended to happen simultaneously. Targeted modifications to the Springfield Development Code are recommended to be completed and legislatively adopted along with the facility plan to ensure consistency with facility plan implementation. As you may recall, the special street setback provision was added to the development code as part of the TSP implementation package in 2020. The section was intended to ensure that development based only on building permits are located in a way that preserves options for future street connectivity should redevelopment occur. It only applies upon redevelopment and requires that buildings not be constructed on area intended as future right-of-way. The setback does not require dedication of right-of-way until the street project delivery occurs and does not set a right-of-way line. The intent is to ensure that buildings are not constructed in locations that would make future streets impossible or highly impractical to construct. The recommended code amendments would enable this special street setback provision to apply to facility plans and Main Street in particular. It would only apply to the two long-term cross-sections and is a key mechanism for the long-term vision established by the facility plan to come to fruition over time. I'd also like to note that it would be necessary to facilitate the long-term transition of utilities in coordination with the long-term cross-section upgrades. Specifically, without the special street setback, buildings could be constructed too close to future right-of-way, preventing an adequate and safe separation between electric facilities and buildings. This fall, we sought feedback on the draft facility plan from the Strategic Advisory Committee and the broader community, including emailing our Interested Parties list with approximately 800 members and mailing postcards to over 800 adjacent business and property owners, encouraging them to review Fact Sheet 6, which is included in your packet tonight, the draft plan, and to provide feedback. As you might imagine, we heard varied opinions and preferences from various stakeholder interests. We largely heard positive reception for the project and enthusiasm for potential community benefits. People appreciated project engagement, information, and our responsiveness. We did receive many questions regarding deliverable stages and outcomes. And we did hear some skepticism that the effort and potential corridor impacts would not be worth the community benefits. Some had lower confidence in corridor awareness of the project and shared that they didn't feel like their feedback was addressed as desired. We also heard that last-minute circumstances, lack of interest, other priorities, online format, and general agency distrust influenced people's decision not to engage. On the draft facility plan itself, we heard positive feedback overall and support for specific tools. We heard that the Toolbox is good and allows for a flexible approach to implementation. We also heard many concerns for implementation impacts to site access and usage and out-of-direction travel for residents, customers, and freight. As you may recall, as part of our third round of community engagement, when we held local access forums with business and property owners on the corridor, we created an interactive mapping tool that documents all of the site access and usage concerns that we've heard from business and property owners on the corridor stemming back to the May McVay Transit Study and then throughout all of this planning phase. And that will be able to be used during design to specifically address those concerns. While some people acknowledge the safety problem, they also doubted that the tools will may not address the project goals as presented in the draft plan. And we did hear some suggestions for alternative solution approaches. Before moving into your discussion, I'd like to note that we got input on the same discussion questions that were included in your packet from the Planning Commission and the Main Street Governance Team last month. From then, we heard that we're on the right track, headed in the right direction. They gave suggestions for helping us to continue to refine our message and they emphasized the importance of the project for the community and their appreciation for the depth, breadth, and variety of community engagement. They also noted that the Toolbox demonstrates that we heard the community, even if we cannot please everyone. They also shared that the code update is critical and will demonstrate the city's commitment to the facility plan and they viewed it as an important element given the long-term implementation timeframe for the full plan. In terms of next steps, after tonight's work session, our project team will work on modifying the draft facility plan to incorporate all the feedback that we've received this fall and preparing a public hearings draft version of the plan. And we're scheduled to start the public hearings process with the Planning Commission in February of 2022 and then come back to you in April. So tonight, what we would like to hear from you, trying to go back, your questions, your comments, hoping that you can respond to the discussion questions that we included in the packet and then also, if there's anything that would make you more comfortable or more feel more informed for the public hearings in April, because I know there'll be quite a bit of lag time between now and then as we revise the draft plan and move into the public hearings process.
Leonard, Molly, are you ready for questions?
Yes.
All right, Leonard?
Okay, thanks for this report, Molly, very informative. So I see that there is a three-foot painted barrier planned to separate the bike lane in places from the flow of traffic. It seems like three feet would be plenty of room for a concrete barrier. Was there any thought given to that?
So is Emma on the call? Bear with me, Molly, and I can get her pulled up.
Okay, thanks.
We will pause for station identification.
I wonder if anybody knows what that's about anymore.
I remember the National Anthem played at the end of the broadcasting day. I think we're gonna be hearing that by the end of the night.
Molly, Emma is here and as soon as she unmutes, then she is able to be heard. Great.
Hello, I think I might have missed something while I was kicked out and rejoining. What was the question?
Hi, Emma, it's Leonard. I was asking, I understand that there is a three-foot painted buffer that's being contemplated to separate the bike lane from traffic at various points. It seems like three feet would be plenty of room to have a raised concrete divider. Is there any thought being given to that, I mean, to increase safety?
Great question. I'm happy to share a little bit, but I'd also like Brian Barnett to speak to this one as our City Traffic Engineer and the final decision-maker on what gets installed on our streets or not. I know that the project team has looked to some of the latest design guidance and that considers the modifications called for in the plan. Do you look at some sort of separation, usually looking at flexible delineators? I know that there's some considerations for the maintenance of the facility. So if you have a concrete ridges structure that sometimes prevents some maintenance techniques that we might want to consider for the street, there are a lot of driveways along the corridor, so we're typically looking at more separation where there aren't as many driveways and turning movements. I'd love to pass it over to Brian to see if he has other comments on concrete specifically compared to the more flexible delineation.
Could you try again?
Counselor, a clarification on your question. Are you referring to the balanced street width or for the situation where we fully separate the bicycles and pedestrians on a, what we kind of call a side path or something like that? Which is, that's only in about a three-block region. Are you thinking about the larger project or just in that three-block?
Could you talk about both? I understand that there was a three-foot divider to separate bike traffic from the flow of regular auto traffic.
Yeah, for the bulk of the project area, we're considering a three-foot buffer, which was gonna be a painted buffer between the bike lane and the travel lane. And it's separated, physically separated rather than a visually separated buffer would be superior for bicycle protection. However, in this environment, we have some challenges. One is that freight is interested on their freight reduction review route, at least for that portion of the corridor. They are interested in retaining the full width of that painted area, the bike lane and the buffer, for oversized vehicles to have extra space for them to be able to move through the corridor. In areas that are not on a state freight reduction review route, we could potentially have a some sort of raised curb or something of that nature. Emma pointed out that there are maintenance concerns, and indeed, that is the case. Right now, we have street sweepers that run uptight to the curb, clean the material out of the gutters and out of the inlets for the drains. We don't have a sweeper that would fit in that five-foot area between that new curb and the existing curb. So that would be a challenge for ongoing maintenance. I imagine that there are some narrow sweepers that could be purchased, but we don't currently have one in stock or viewed as something that we've in stock or viewed as something that we would be planning on purchasing at this point in time. In addition to that, Emma also mentioned that the frequency of driveways, and there are quite a number of driveways. And there are quite a number of street intersections. So each one of those places constitutes a place where the curb separator would have to be broken and provide space for those driveways to be utilized. For them to be effectively utilized, that opening would be ten or fifteen feet wider than the actual driveway is, perhaps even twenty feet. I don't know exactly, but there's going to be less and less curb available to install in those kinds of circumstances. I hope I've been responsive.
Yeah, no, that's quite responsive. I, I can't help but think that concrete dividers in parts of the road would still be a lot more restrictive than no, no concrete dividers whatsoever. Is that correct? I mean,
Well, yeah, when you say, I mean, when you say concrete divider, I think I need to ask for clarity. Are you talking about a two-inch tall, a four-inch tall, you know, a twelve-inch tall barrier?
No, not, 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 not like a construction barrier. Talking about like a, like a two, a two to four inch barrier.
Okay, so that would be a mountable type of curb. And so even with delineators on that, there would be some, there wouldn't be any redirection. You know, if an errant driver goes over, they're not going to be pushed back from that device, but they certainly will get a wake-up call that they need to do something different. Plus, they will tend to shy away from that. We all tend to move away from the wall as we go down the hallway and end up more toward the center. So they would end up more toward their lane line on the left side. But yes, I can certainly see that there would be some, some benefit to cyclist safety. I think the challenge is in the details of implementation.
You're mentioning the freight trucks. That leads me into another question that I saw that one of the proposed patterns has a narrow lane right next to a wider lane. And would that, would that plan be to have just cars in one lane, say a nine-foot lane? And then trucks in the lane next to it, trucks and buses, in say, an eleven, an eleven-foot lane, something like that?
I, Molly, if you could pull up the cross-section, this might be a little more helpful. Because I'm not certain I know where that nine-foot lane is that the counselor was mentioning. I think we have eleven-foot lanes as our minimum lane width throughout. There may be what we call shy distance between the stripe and the face of a median in the center. I don't recall if we have that off the top of my head, but I think we have a little bit of shy distance.
Those feet were a guess on my part.
Okay, okay. I believe, I think eleven-foot is our, our minimum lane width throughout the entire corridor. And I thought I saw some head nuts when I mentioned that earlier.
All right. So would, would the intent be for the narrow lane just to have cars in it and for the wider lane to have trucks and buses?
Well, let's see, we're showing eleven-foot lanes in all cases, except for the active transportation enhanced, where we're showing a twelve-foot lane on the outboard edges and a one-foot shy distance from that lane edge to the, to the outboard curb and also a two-foot shy distance to the inboard curb at the raised median.
All right, in that case, what I'd like to just draw the the project's attention to is a plan by a group called NACTO. It's a National Association of City Transportation Officials. They were proposing that one lane that carried cars only with a wider lane next to it that would be designated for trucks and buses would significantly add to safety and decrease the amount of accidents just by constricting the speed in each lane. If there had been any kind, any kind of consideration given to that?
Well, I am familiar with the NACTO organization and have looked at some of their design documents and recommendations. I'm not familiar with the one that you're referring to, so I haven't done any investigation. What comes to mind immediately, though, is, is would it be a legal restriction of which lane vehicles can travel in? Or would it just simply be by the very nature of the narrow lane, trucks would not choose to use it? I mean, I, I think the narrow lane might impact the truck driver more so than the wide lane might impact the automobile driver.
Yeah, I, I, I agree that they would be more or less self-regulating. I don't think there would be trucks voluntarily getting into the narrow lane. Okay, if the if the people that are planning the lanes would give some thought to narrowing one lane and widening the other, then I think you might, you might like the results as far as, as far as safety is concerned. I, I also wanted to ask, could, was there any thought of the, of the bike lanes being raised to the height of the sidewalk as opposed to putting the bikes with the, with the motor traffic?
Well, when one raises the bike lanes to the sidewalk elevation, unless there's a physical separation between sidewalk and bike lane, then we end up with an intermingling of bicycles and pedestrians. And the speed difference between bicycles and pedestrians is enough that when there is a collision, that there is almost certainty of injury to one or both members of that. The other thing is, is that when we get wide sidewalk, very wide sidewalks and are asking cyclists to use it, then we get cyclists going in both directions. And when they go in both directions, then we have a further set of conflicts with the pedestrians walking both directions, cyclists in both directions at higher speed than the pedestrians. So this, this, I called it a side path earlier, and that's, that actually is the name for what you and I are discussing right now. And the side path context is generally not well received from a safety or from a comfort perspective.
Yeah, I, I can't help thinking that the collisions between the bicyclists and pedestrians are going to be a lot less lethal than the ones between the bicycles and the cars. I, I might, I, I, I might be wrong about that, but.
No, I, I, I think I would agree to that. I think the frequency of the bicycle pedestrian experience of crashes might go up higher, but most of the bicycle crashes we have are related to some form of turning movement from a motor vehicle. And that is not going to change if we combine the pedestrians and the cyclists together, because we still have the same numbers of driveway openings and street intersections.
Right. I'm, I'm thinking that some enforcement of bike traffic might encourage everybody to go in the same direction, but I'm, I'm I know that it can be like herding cats sometimes. So one, one last question for Franklin and Glenn Wood. It's been a very dangerous intersection, and I know a number of people have been hit. Are there, are there any plans to work on that intersection and make it safer?
What kind of crashes occurred that you have heard from your?
I, I, I think that pedestrians and bicyclists have been hit at that intersection.
Leonard, is it, is your question related to Main Street?
Yeah, well,
Because this is going to be from twenty to seventy-second, and we got a whole long list of folks.
Okay.
So if you want to shoot them the email, if you've got, I know.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's what I'll do. I'm getting far, far afield. Thank you. Thank you for your input. I mean, thank you for your answers.
Steve?
Oh, I just, I've, I've heard of a lot of businesses being a little, little concerned about access to the streets. And you haven't mentioned it too much. It sounds like you might have pacified them pretty well. I hope so. Because as I see it, with those roundabouts, traffic can turn into those businesses, and when they come out, they can circle around and come back the other way pretty easily. So I think that's well done.
Thank you.
Cory?
Thank you. First, my comment is that I really appreciate all of this work, and I've been following it for quite some time. And I went to the last planning commission meeting too, where y'all talked about this. I've heard people's questions and heard how this has been evolving, and I just appreciate the care that is taking and also acknowledging that it's going to take a couple of decades and knowing that, you know, despite the fact that we're going to have a really good plan, I know that you also are thinking, you know, building in a little bit of flexibility for how things may evolve over time in terms of traffic and, and all of that. So I just want to say I appreciate that. My question is really a little bit different than the others in that I just want more information about pedestrian crossing across Main Street and what, what that looks like in terms of the planning, because I think, you know, a lot of this is focusing on how traffic flows and how bicycle traffic flows. And I'm just interested in terms of the sort of safety for how do we continue to improve so that people can cross in multiple areas across there so they can get from place to place?
Okay, thank you for that question. I'll point back to the pedestrian safety study that was done a number of years ago, and the outcome of that was that we have built quite a number of rapid flashing beacon with center medians to make a two-stage environment for those pedestrians to cross and provide them a center refuge. We also have the pedestrian hybrid beacon that's out at sixty-sixth and Main, higher speed environment, so a different kind of device. Those kinds of devices can be incorporated during the actual project development, design phase of any one of these projects. I think it might be appropriate to think about, we have put those systems in based on the old specific plan, safety plan, that was motivated by some serious problems that were, had occurred in the corridor. We've seemed, we have seen a lot of use of those crossings. We have seen quite a number of people who will also be fifty feet away from those crossings and not use them. So because of that set of circumstances, the fact that if this plan is adopted and a project comes through and constructs the center median automatically provides that refuge area for the pedestrians who are choosing to cross in those locations. That alone, I believe, will be very helpful for many of the folks, because we still see people who are making that two-stage crossing, stopping in the two-lane, left turn lane, and then having traffic go by on both sides with no apparent protection. If somebody were to choose to make a turn or a lane shift over to prepare for a turn, that pedestrian's more likely to be struck, of course. I think, though, specific to your question, that when we are in the midst of project development, we can do an assessment with lane transit district based on their stop locations and with other observations about where crossings are occurring or where, where pedestrian near misses or crashes might be occurring. Fortunately, pedestrian crashes are very rare and infrequent. Unfortunately, when they do occur, though, they're rather serious. So relying on crash data of pedestrian crashes is a very, very incomplete picture. So it would really be looking at origins and destinations where we see existing pedestrian activity.
Hey, Brian, I know you were giving kind of a technical answer before I turn it back to Cory, but just to clarify, when we put the medians in, right, we are not saying that it is safe to cross outside of a crosswalk.
That is true. That is true. And so the other acknowledgement there is that under Oregon law, it is legal to make a crossing as long as, at any place along the roadway, as long as it's perpendicular to the roadway, not on a diagonal, but going straight across, and if you don't impede traffic. Now, I'm not saying I recommend that. I just want to acknowledge that that is legal for people to do, and so that behavior does exist.
Oh, no, I understand. We're talking about safe behavior versus what realistically happens on the ground, but there's a point that we just have to kind of keep promoting it. Cory, did you have other questions?
No, that was my only question, and I appreciate that, because I appreciate hearing and being prepared for us to adjust as we go. So I mean, that's, that's just a big piece for me is knowing that depending on how things evolve, to know that, oh, we are still having some pedestrian crossing issues. We can stick this in here. We can try these other things. So I just wanted to hear that. So thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Joe?
Thank you. So we've got a few questions on, I'm trying to get my head around the left turn and then the time and travel. So what, if I understand it correctly, is that, let's say, for example, you're going westbound on Main Street, and you want to make a left turn, and you see your left turn opportunity. Based on what you're saying, is that the, a median that would, if it's present, the longest you would have to continue that travel would be thirty seconds before you can make a left turn? Is that correct?
Thirty-six, thirty to sixty seconds, yes.
Okay, so how far at forty-five miles, or say thirty-five miles per hour, can you travel in sixty seconds?
Let's see. That would be about forty-four feet per second. So sixty times forty-four.
So you're looking.
You can do that math for me. That's, that's roughly the distance that you could go in that kind of time.
Right, about three, about four hundred yards or four hundred and twenty yards or so is what I'm kind of guessing. So, so you're, you're going, and that's quite a distance in my mind. So I guess, is that's the worst-case scenario, is you're going to have, so you're picturing left turn opportunities every so often. And so basically speaking, that the distance between those opportunities is going to be four hundred some yards?
I, I would say that the left turn opportunities are going to be at most public street intersections, so that's going to be much less than that distance.
Right, okay.
I, I think that, and somebody else on staff who can correct me if I'm misrepresenting this, but I think the the idea, the concept that we were trying to convey here is that if you're in, you're choosing to make a left-hand turn before the, in the current circumstances, during peak hour, you're going to wait thirty to sixty seconds to find that gap in opposing traffic that allows you to make that left turn.
At a minimum.
At, I would agree, at a minimum.
Right.
And that the time it takes on average, so it depends upon which point in the corridor you're at, on average, it's going to take you about that thirty to sixty seconds to get down to the roundabout and make the U-turn at the roundabout and be able to come back.
So but you're also talking a considerable distance for the person to drive, and but it's not, it's not a huge deal. I mean, it's like, okay, whatever. But I'm looking at the timing, so because you mentioned that and the timing to be able to get across because of the immense amount of traffic that Main Street experiences in both directions. So if someone could go back to the slide that has chapter four in the toolboxes section that shows a diagram and maybe share that, and I can explain what I'm.
Then I can pull it up.
The slide is, it's the chapter four in the toolboxes where it shows a diagram of the street. You're looking kind of an overview of the street, not, it's not a slice, but an overview. And it shows a car utilizing their now, that's, yeah, it's a previous to that, I think. All right, yeah, right there. Okay. So if you, I wish I had my flip and clicker here. So if you had, you see the van making a turn from the, I'm just saying, let's just say we're looking west, okay, and you see the van and coming out from the north, turning on to eastbound Main Street, correct?
Are you talking about this car in the?
Yeah, the van, yeah. So now, now picture in your head the intersection at Kitty Corner to Papa's Pizza on Main Street. That's what's currently set up right there. So there's a median, and there's cars that come out. Now, picture that van cannot safely make an east turn from coming out of the north, turning, going south, turning east. They cannot make a safe turn unless it's all clear on all lanes, both directions. Now tell me, how long is that van going to be sitting on that side street when it's clear all directions, east and, eastbound and westbound on Main Street? And if you want to know, go to that intersection I'm talking about, and you're going to end up being very frustrated. What I'm afraid, what I'm fearful of is creating that very same scenario all up and down Main Street unintentionally. But, but no one's going to be able to get out onto Main Street. They can't use that lane that you're covering with concrete is called a utility lane at this point. Right? Am I incorrect?
Yes, it can be used for two-way traffic.
Which is a beautiful thing, but we're taking away the express reason for having utility lanes. We're, we're making that go away. And so therefore, the, the uses of that lane are also going to be taken away. And so people coming out onto that Main Street, whether, whether they're, they're facing north wanting to turn west or facing south wanting to turn east, they're going to be having a face, getting across a minimum of three lanes with no travel in it. And that, that to me is, is a ton more dangerous and/or a ton more frustrating for people trying to travel. So does that make, am I making any sense?
No, I, I, I understand your premise.
So, so it's, it's, I think, I think we, we need to be very careful about creating a whole. About creating a whole population of very upset drivers that I think at one point. We're going to see travel on Main Street. Of course, it's not going to get, it's not going to get better. We're going to have more, and so the ability to safely cross or even get out into traffic to make those turns off these side streets. We're going to be forcing them to, to try to hang a right-hand turn, which I think is what you're, you're getting at, is what you're trying to encourage. Is having them all make, everybody make a right turn and then having to go down to some roundabout a quarter mile away. And come back around just when they could have come out and turned left. Onto Main Street, but now they have a barrier where they can't safely do it.
It is undeniable that to achieve the safety outcome that a median provides, there will be changes in how people access the corridor. I, I, I can't argue against your point, counselor. What I can say is that, that, that van in that diagram, if they chose to turn right to avoid the left turn that we're discussing.
Okay.
They could turn right and they could go down a block or two and find one of those left turn opportunities. Into a public street and they can make a U-turn in that intersection area. That's a lawful maneuver. There's enough space. So it, it turns into a two-stage left turn by doing a right turn and then a U-turn. The freight vehicles, of course, they have to go clear to a roundabout, and that's understandable based on their size and, and the needs.
Right, now U-turns are, now U-turns are lawful and, and quote unquote, an uncontrolled intersection, correct?
Yes, and they're lawful on a controlled intersection if signed properly.
So we don't have any signs in the city that I've seen, or very few that say U-turn permitted.
Correct.
And so here we're saying, okay, you can do that, but we're not going to tell you about that. And then you have, and in is the controlled intersection. Stop sign on the, on, on two of the streets of the four in an intersection. Our stop signs. Presence controlling that intersection, or is, would that be called a controlled intersection?
I believe the text of the law, which I have not reviewed recently, I'll stipulate that. Is an electronically controlled intersection, i.e. a traffic signal.
Yeah, that's my, that's my understanding too, but I just, I just think people are going to not want to do U-turns. And then they're going to be turning down the side streets into people's neighborhoods and using their driveways to turn around. So that's, I mean, it just. It's frustrating to me to see that we're creating a lot of, a lot more vehicular traffic and movement when we could have not. But anyway, so that's my shots. Thanks.
Thank you.
Ian.
Good evening. I just have a quick question. It doesn't involve doing any equations, so. I, I just, so I mean, about a month ago, we talked about the new LED lights. And I'm just curious, was that factored into the increasing of safety for pedestrians or even? You know, drivers especially. Uh, in times like this, when it gets darker earlier or just in when it's raining like it is all the time. Just curious, like. Could that be a factor in increase in the safety? Because when we talked about it initially, it kind of seemed like it, and I'm just curious. Was this a potential factor that can be added, uh, once those are put in place?
Yes, streetlights do help with nighttime crashes, reducing all types of nighttime crashes. And when we do a project to do medians and roundabouts and whatever else may occur, we certainly would review. The lighting situation and include it in the project if appropriate. Of course, I, I believe you are all aware that we have a current project to replace all of the existing streetlights. Um, in the corridor, roughly two hundred. And add an additional approximately just over a hundred new streetlights in the corridor where existing poles can support that. So we will have a substantially improved lighting environment for Main Street. Um, in this, in this, you know, in the subject area of tonight's discussion. How much that will reduce crashes? Um, I don't know off the top of my head, but I believe it's in the high signal digit percentages, maybe in the low double digit. So I will say anywhere from seven to. You know, fifteen percent reduction in crashes occur because of improved, um, street lighting. I, that's, those are guess numbers, and I apologize, I don't have a direct answer. But we, we will and consider lighting upgrades. And when I say upgrades, at this point in time, because of the current ODOTa Pet Safety Project that's been done on an emergency basis. We will have to look for new poles. We'll have to install new poles to put lighting into fill gaps.
Ian, did you have anything else? Steve.
One question, pedestrian crossing. Right now, if a pedestrian wants to cross Main Street. He only has to signal and step out, and all four lanes have to stop. With the new median, is that a refuge area? On, on the new, new, new design, they take cross to the middle. And then, but those two lanes can continue until I get to the middle.
Yeah, I believe you're referring to the rectangular rapid flashing beacon.
No, I'm talking about anywhere on Main Street.
Okay, so. If a pedestrian is at a legal crossway, wrong, excuse me, legal crosswalk.
But, but that's not it. It doesn't have to be illegal. Right now, I can be on Main Street and I can signal, I'm going to walk out there. They have to stop, right?
If you're in a legal crosswalk, and a legal crosswalk is defined as any intersection, doesn't matter if there's stripes there. And any place we put stripes in. So a mid-block crossing is not a designated crossing point, I think is the terminology that's used. It's legal for you to make that crossing as a pedestrian, but you can't impede traffic.
I, I misunderstood the law. I sort of thought that if I was a pedestrian there, they had to stop for me when I signaled I was coming out, so.
Yeah, at an intersection, yes.
Yeah, yeah, I, I know. That's, that's interesting to know now, because I get mid-block, you know, some places in town and. Uh, anyway. So is that, is that, would that be a refuge area in the middle of the median?
Yes, so the, the way the law addresses a median refuge area is that only the direction of traffic that you are crossing has to stop. The other direction doesn't have to stop until you get to the median and across it and are preparing to make the second crossing.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, we're almost out of time for the items. So Molly, Brian, you, are you guys looking for more feedback? And can you talk to us about next steps here?
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be helpful for us to know, you know, in the next, you know, month or two, and we can talk at our next check-in. But what, what the full council, um, needs to feel like they're ready for the public hearings in April.
Okay, Leonard.
Are, are we going to be giving final approval at the meeting in April?
Well, you're gonna, there, there's gonna be, the public hearings will start, you know, and then you can extend them and continue and.
Okay.
We're, we're starting the end game in April, right? Depending on when the scheduling is, we don't know when we're going to vote yet.
Well, if, i- if the public hearings are going to be taking place in April, then I think, you know, the guidance that I would give is, yeah, we'll see you in April.
Okay.
Um, okay, and the last, I guess the last comment that I would make is remember that this is really kind of at a requirement stage, right? Like, there's a difference between the detailed design, what we would be telling ODOT would be, is kind of work this direction. I always keep thinking about Merrily standing out there with those pedestrian intersection, intersections. Going, hey, how do we make this work by almost property by property? And I really do think that's what it's going to take. Um, to be able to, to be able to improve safety on Main Street, because I think it's just, it's a complicated corridor, Merrily.
Yes, I will say that I'm probably, I've been with this now for probably eight years. I'd go all the way back to the, the first time we went through this before we started the second time. Um, and I will say that I have been a hard sell through this process. Um, because I have been trying to consider the pedestrian crossings, the businesses, the egres, exactly, all, all the different parts. I have to say that by the time we've gotten to this particular point in time, the two things that impressed me the most. Are the community, the responsiveness of our team to the community outreach. And being able to respond as detailed as much as possible. There, there are times when a community makes cra- reactions or makes comments that it's impossible to please. There's always going to be those folks, but for the majority of folks, they've been able to be responsive, give them information that they needed. And, and the other part is that. Flexibility is the word. And the one, the, the comment about not one size fits all, and that's true. It's going to change out how the corridor looks all the way through. Even if it takes twenty years to get there, but it's flexible. And that combines what the council sees, what the council asks. That combines the community outreach, it commands, it combines the expertise on the part of you folks. And any other researched information that we can get a hold of to make this work. And, and, and it's going to be done in phases. So, like I said, I was a hard sell, I've been a hard sell all the way through. I haven't been, I was not convinced way back when that this was going to really make a big difference. I am, I am convinced now. I'm appreciative of everything that's been done. Um, and where we are right now, and I'm looking forward to the public hearings. Um, but I, I just wanted to put that in there that, you know, I have been a hard sell and I'm, I'm hap- I'm happy with where we're at now.
All right, thanks, Merrily. Molly, Brian, thank you for presenting, and we're going to move on to Nate in the ARPA guidance conversation.
All right, can everyone hear me?
Look at you.
So I'm going to jump right in. So we are here this evening to continue our conversation on the city's use of its ARPA funds. Uh, we started that conversation back in September in a work session. Um, at that time, we provided you with a list of potential projects. Uh, I think for a lot of you, the items on that list were familiar, items that we've talked about for many years and a recognized need. Uh, you asked that we bring it back at a later date prioritized with the numbers tightened up. Uh, the CBM that included as part of your packet has that list prioritized and the numbers tightened up where we are able to. Um, some things I think worth noting, there's a number of items that aren't, that were on the original list and aren't on that list this evening. Um, a number of those items were included as part of supplemental budget one, which was approved by you in October in a regular session. Uh, that included the fire and life safety radial replacement, um, the museum elevator replacement. Um, upgrades to security in the council chambers. Uh, and then some additional staffing and development and public works for project delivery. Uh, the total cost of those adds over the full life of them is roughly two point four million. That leaves us with roughly eleven point five million still to allocate. And I'd also like to mention that the Lamalane request is still outstanding. Uh, special districts were not given a direct allocation. Uh, when Lamalane went to their state representatives. They were told that their money was included in the city's allocation, but without any direction or guidance as to how much or how to determine that. Um, we kicked off our budget process last week with the open, opening of our budget software for data entry. Uh, the guidance that we received tonight will help us, inform us in terms of what to include in the fiscal year twenty-three proposed budget. Um, a number of items I've also recommended for consideration, uh, to be included in FY twenty-two supplemental budget. Um, the reason I, I am recommending that is that there's a lot of funding out there, both locally and nationally. Competing for limited resources in the forms of equipment and labor. Uh, it may be in our best interest to get these included in the current year, not that the work would get done. Uh, but so that we could begin the procurement process, get contracts in place. Uh, and potentially associated, uh, equipment locked up. Uh, so with that, I'm going to turn it over to you to continue the conversation. Uh, if you have any questions for me, and then if it would be helpful, would anyone like me to bring up that CBM with the list?
Uh, Cory.
Um, I just, since you mentioned it and I had noticed that it wasn't on there. The last time we talked about this and we talked about Lamalane, I know that they were here and we, they didn't give us a specific amount. And I'm wondering if they have since then, if they have come back and said, here's what we were thinking or not.
Okay, I, um, thought there was a request included as part of your packet in that work session. But they have made a formal request and the amount is roughly one point seven five million. And I believe that, um, Michael Warco is in the audience today as well, if, if you have any questions or want to bring him up.
Okay, thank you. That makes me look like I didn't do my homework, but I must dismiss that part.
Merrily.
That's okay, I had the same question. I was, what I'm curious about is what the one point seven five million is for. I'll preface my question by saying that. Not only do we have a responsibility to the community, but as a city, we have a responsibility towards our infrastructure and our buildings. And keep that, and the upkeep and keep them in good enough shape to be able to continue governance. And I'm looking at prioritizing in that regard. I'm looking at the fact that costs of having that done. The roof on the jail and the HVAC in the city hall, the costs are going to continue to increase. So the further we hold off on doing that, the more expensive it's going to get. So I'm curious as to what the one point seven five million is for Lamalane. Just in perspective of taking, our being able to take care of things that need to be taken care of. Uh, in, in our daily, uh, structures. Or, uh, in contrast to possibly something new or whatever Lamalane has in mind. And if, and if Michael's in the audience, I'd love to hear.
And let's remind him of, please, and let, let him talk to the request, and then we can try to get to some sort of resolution on it.
Yeah.
Michael, you're unmuted, so you are able to speak. I do not have your camera up for the simple fact that it will cause delays on your side.
Okay, it's probably a benefit for everyone if you can't see me. So can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And number one, I just want to thank the mayor and president Mo just for the opportunity to sit in and even make this a request. We had made the formal request of one point seven five million dollars, just briefly where we came up with that number was. Even though we're eligible for funds, there was no direct access to these funds. And we were told we had to go through a transfer through local government. And obviously with our fine partnership, not just with Team Springfield, but with the city of Springfield. I've always seen us as the city of Springfield's Department of Parks and Recreation. Um, so out of the allotment that the city had received, which was fourteen million dollars. Um, we took a look at our operating budget versus the city's operating budget, and that was about twelve and a half percent. So really, without a whole lot of guidance from the federal government, we basically took. Um, that same ratio and said, okay, out of the fourteen million dollars, one point seven million dollars would be that same. Ratio of your operating budget versus Lamalane's operating budget. I will say that, um, our revenue loss for this period of time from COVID totaled more than three point six million dollars. So it's not a full ask, and again, I, I fully understand that. I know that you've got more, uh, demands and requests and you have funding for. Um, but really, really, um, I would not be standing here before you if it really wasn't important to the, to the park district. It basically fits into three different buckets, and one is what we would do with the money. Uh, that would be first and foremost for early childhood and youth programs. We've had to reduce, um, our programs because of a lack of staffing. Um, because a lot of the requirements that are placed, and as well as the highly competitive job market for some of these frontlines. If we as a public entity just can't compete a lot. So what we would do is utilize this to be able to hire not just hourly or seasonal. But even part-time and full-time staff members. Currently, there's four of our kids sites. Uh, kids site, club sites that are closed. And what does that mean? It means that parents can't, and guardians can't drop off their kiddos for before and after school programs. And then that's a domino effect, right, of the economic development that happens within the city. So staff retention and then being able to start, restart programs, as well as some of our low or no-cost programs during the summer. We weren't able to run fully because, again, we didn't have staffing. The other bucket would be for our parks, planning and facilities. Um, one thing that I'm proud of is, you know, we have forty-six parks. We kept all forty-six of our parks open during the entire pandemic. However, our service levels really did drop off, so a lot of the funds that we're asking for would go through. Just maintenance practices that we're way behind on, uh, whether it's irrigation, contractual maintenance. Um, we've seen an uptick in graffiti and vandalism, so a lot of our facilities need a lot of infrastructure improvements. We would use that, as well as being able, again, to hire staff. Um, uh, to keep the public safe. That's really important to us and all of you I know. Uh, where we had to put porta jons out there because we couldn't have staff to open up, nor was it safe for them to use. Um, you know, our permanent lavatory, our outdoor restroom facility. So that would be part of it. And then, um, the other kind of bucket, if you will, would be just to increase our facility hours. Without staffing, we're not able to open all of our facilities up for those after-work hour times as well as on the weekends. Um, I know I sound like a broken record, but the way that our budgets work, we heavily rely on revenues to make our budget. Just to meet our budget. That's not additional money. We need typically in a non-pandemic year, four and a half million dollars to make our budget. When we don't make our budget, um, that four and a half million dollars typically comes from programs and services that we charge a fee for. When we weren't able to do that, that reduced our budget. Thereby, we had to make some really tough decisions. It was one of the hardest, some of the hardest things I had to do. I had to lay off staff. I had to eliminate positions. We had to cut back on services. These funds would basically be able to prime the pump so we could reopen up facilities at pre-COVID times. Hire quality staff. And then when we're able to do that, our revenues would go up. And then that would actually have a, a really longstanding impact on, on what we're doing. So I know I just threw out a, a lot of information to you, but everything that we're asking for is all part of the American Rescue Plan Act. And their crest for support. And then when I was just looking at the council goals, um, you know, really a lot of these are right in line with what. Willamalane's goals are, the city council goals are, as well as the A R P A goals. And that's providing financial, uh, responsible and innovative government services. Check. Um, encourage economic development and revitalization through community partnerships. Check. And then strengthen public safety and leveraging partnerships and resources. We, uh, we have one and a half park rangers right now that police all of our areas. Uh, we would love to be able to hire more park rangers and public safety officers that work for the park district. That would work in conjunction with the Springfield Police Department, but really be ambassadors for the park. Because we want to keep our parks, uh, safe and welcoming and open. So that's, uh, that's almost everything you need to know in, in four and a half minutes. I apologize if I went too quickly.
Thanks, Michael.
Perfect, Michael. Okay, we're going to have you hang out in case, for a second, in case there's any questions. But my recommendation would be, um, maybe, uh, that we can get to some sort of direction on the Willamalane ask. Um, because this is a, we're going to see the ARPA funds again, but I would like, you know, if we do anything, I'd like to get them off the table. Corey?
Um, yes, and since I am an overachiever, I did go back and look at my packet and saw that in there. And noticed that staff is recommending that maybe we're not able to, we don't fund at that full amount. And it sounds like they're trying to cover a lot of things in there as opposed to like one particular project. So I would, uh, as I said before, I think it's important to share some of this money with Willamalane. And I'm also totally open to it not being the full amount, but to do, you know, what it is that feels like it would be helpful.
Joe?
Yeah, just right along those same lines with Corey saying is, is, uh, just add one more sentence. Is I, I don't think it's, that's out of line for Willamalane to remake the request. And I don't think that'd be out of line for us to assist. But I think it would be helpful for us to assist. If we can get a, a list in, a list from Willamalane of, you know, we, we heard of what, what Michael wants to do, Michael. And I think they're all justified for sure. I mean, at least worth looking at, but I'd like to see a list of, uh, how they would prioritize. What they would do with that money. So that way they would, we could ensure whatever if their highest priority is this. And just make a, a, a list on down in, in order of priority. And I think it would make things a lot easier.
You do, I don't remember. Did we get that? Do we have a list that came in the original letter?
It was basically, I'm sorry, it was basically put into three, um, buckets, uh, early childhood. The request was 800,000, planning parks and facilities was 300,000. And then the increase of facility hours throughout the district was about 650. But we certainly can adjust and, I mean, to me, the big priority is, um, staffing, hiring people. Getting people, uh, you know, jobs within the Springfield community. And then hoping, um, that that will, uh, in, in also help out the, the local economy as well. Like gain full employment with benefits.
So Michael, could you read that? I had early childhood at 800 K, parks, um, park maintenance at 300 K, and then I was programming.
Yeah, it was a program in a facility hours for about 650,000.
Are you giving them in the order that is the priority for the, for what, for the, for the Willamalane? So it's early, the, the prior, you've given us the values, but is that the priority order, right? Early childhood to number one, parks number two, and then programming not number three?
I would say, because all of them have a staffing component, staffing would be my number one priority within those three areas. Hiring more preschool teachers, kids club, you know, staffing at early childhood, staffing at planning parks, facilities, keeping us safe. And then a frontline staff to keep our facilities open longer with qualified staff.
Okay. Anybody else? Um, I'm comfortable if we want to what, like, if we start with 800 K. And if you guys want to talk more, I, like, w- we just have to get to some sort of answer here. Joe?
Yeah, I think, I think that would be reasonable. And, um, that way, instead of necessarily committing Mr. Wargo to any particular thing. Then he can use that 800 for, um, however, which way he feels. And it could, it could be a moving target. I think it could easily be a moving target, um, as time. You know, time goes by and, um, you know, getting people employed is great. But I, I think it's, it's, we really need to make sure that, I think that the, uh, the funds, they recommended not for programming. Because that's always temporary type thing, but more for what can they, what can be used to, to put something up front. That's going to be, uh, lasting and, you know, lasting a long time. So I think, I think 800 would be great, um, to give him some, some flexibility and, and see where it goes from there.
Merrily.
Um, I was feeling a little more generous and I was, I was, my man went with a million. Um, it's not that big a difference from what you suggested, but I, and I too was thinking if it was, if the focus was on staffing. Because you get the staffing and then you can, you can work from there and maybe we can help out a little bit more. But you can work from there, get the staffing and figure out what the staffing can accomplish. Um, and, and what, you know, what, what's needed beyond that. I think, um, the way Michael described it was, really made sense to me, but I, I was feeling more generous at a million.
Uh, just to be clear, the only place I came with 800 K was when I listened for priorities, early childhood was a big priority for, for Gap. So that's where that number is coming from.
Right, I understand.
Okay. Corey?
I, I, I'm not laughing at anybody, but I think that's a, the poor mayor did not want to be accused of being not generous. So I'm with Merrily. I, I was also thinking a million is a good place to start. And, um, I appreciate, and I also, I really appreciate what Council Bishop said in that, you know, I think that, you know, they get to use it how they want to. Really, and, um, thinking of the things, whether it's staffing, if we're able to hire enough people or whatever. So yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm a little bit more in the, the close to the 1 million.
Okay. Steve? Steve, did you have anything? You aren't still on mute.
Hey, I'm too, I'm still learning. It's 1 million.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, that's it. 1 million.
Okay, Damian?
Yeah, uh, I, I think 1 million is good, but also I want to issue a challenge to figure out ways. To implement more cultural programming that would inherently increase visibility of Lamalane. The use of Lamalane and feed into, uh, potential growth. That way, you can have a surplus where if anything like this ever happened again, uh, you would have had such a good reputation. Which you already do have, but so many things that are in place that will keep you afloat. Uh, you know, like I said, I, I really would love to see how this organization will fit into various type of cultural programming. That are going to educate our youth about other cultures and other diverse narratives and things like that. So I, I, I think 1 million, but I challenge you, uh, Lamalane to make that happen. Bring it.
Hunter?
Thanks, Mayor. Yes, um, I, I'm, uh, thinking along Damian's lines. I'd like to throw out a challenge too. I mean, I'm, I'm not, um, against the million either, right? I would like to see the two, uh, 200,000, um, that are in addition to, I presume, the, uh, the early childcare program. I'd like to see it used for the parks. Um, and I don't have any problem with, uh, cultural programs at the parks. But I think the parks benefit everyone. That's all I got.
Okay, so I'm going to sum up what I heard. So everybody can nod up, um, that we're giving them, that we're saying it's a million dollars for, for Willamalane. And that, that, that it's essentially unrestricted. So between the three buckets that Michael provided us in the letter that we are finding any combination. Go ahead, Nate.
Now, so, um, I, I agree with that idea that it's, they can use it however they see fit. But do recognize that it has to be within, uh, the federal guidelines for, uh, the use of ARPA funds. That this money is flowing through us, um, it will show as a pass through and then as a sub recipient. And we will have monitoring requirements associated with it. So to just know that we will work closely with Willamalane, um, to provide this and allow them to use it in a way that is legally compliant. It does not get us into any trouble. I just want to add that to the top.
When, when we, we said unrestricted, we mean also follow federal law.
Mr. Mayor, can I just say something real quick? Number one, I can't thank this council enough. This is going to be a huge, um, help and impact on all of us. I gladly accept the challenge, uh, made by, uh, Councilman Pitts. Part of what we're doing anyway is a huge D E I strategic plan and outreach to make sure that those populations and demographics. And groups that typically have not been, um, as involved as we'd like to at Willamalane. We will absolutely, uh, make sure that they are a part of this plan and welcome them to our, uh, facilities and programs with, with open arms. And, and grow on that as well.
Okay, Tish?
Thank you. Yes, I had my, I had it before, before Mike said, Michael said, thanks. I was going to say, hey, if we got some, uh, tracking. Responsibilities with that, which I know we do, is, um, I would like to lay as much as we can to minimize our staff time. To lay as much of that responsibility on Willamalane to report back to us so we can cut and paste. Otherwise, I don't want to create, you know, by giving money, uh, giving money to this organization, now creating work for our organization. Doesn't seem to make a lot of sense. So, so let's put them, put the might, the work as much we can on Mr. Wargo. What do you think about that, Michael?
Um, I have no problem with that. My CFO, Betty Nielsen, is on this call. And, um, she will absolutely be providing, um, uh, the, any necessary reports. Well, it'll be on the Willamalane staff and we'll, uh, regularly update you as frequently as you need. And with the information that you feel is important.
Great. Thank you, Sher.
Okay, we've got about five minutes left, Nate. I'm going to call out one other specific item in your A I S and see if we can't get a head nod on it. Um, did people see the Carter building remodel? Um, and Nate, do you want to just give us the 30 second, uh, view on that one?
Yeah, actually, uh, the Carter building, uh, remodel got, uh, dropped, uh, from consideration in this list. Um, since we spoke with you last, uh, we found that there are some structural problems with that building. And that to, uh, bring it up to standard, uh, might be as expensive as building a new building. Um, and so it's, it's still being evaluated, uh, but there's a potential that it could be, uh, demolished. So it's, it's, um, um, it's probably in our best interest not to associate our funds with that site, uh, not knowing what we would do with it in the future.
I think that sounds great. And I'm looking for some head nods here. And, um, with five minutes left, is there another place that you want to, us to give you maybe a little bit more guidance? I know we're probably going to schedule some more time.
We're going to have to, if, if, because there are a number of items that I think should be considered for, um, uh, supplemental budgets in F Y 22. But, uh, one of those I like to call it is the citywide legacy street light replacement. Uh, I think that was a project that you greenlighted, but we haven't identified funding for that. This would be a great use of the funds. Uh, one of the challenges we're going to have is we got three years left to spend this remaining, uh, 11 and a half. Well, now 10 and a half million dollars. Uh, and this is one that won't require a lot of staff time. That we'll be using a procurement and a contractor to do the work. Um, and it'd be nice to get moving on it.
Joe?
Yes, thank you. I, I strongly support that use of these funds for those. And I did, you know, I did want to mention too is that when we went to this whole proposal, what now that comes out about $700 a head, a, a street light head that I'm. You know, just so we're aware of it, but as far as timing of it, the funds are there. We should be able to do it well within the timeframe. And it would absolutely, I think, put a, put the money in light to all the citizens, uh, in Springfield. So I think it's a great use of it.
All right. And then the other one, if, if we're, oh, I see more questions. I'll wait.
Corey? You're on mute.
Wasn't a question. I was just going to agree that, yes, I, for some reason, I thought we were already moving forward on that. Um, so yes, on the streetlights.
Let the record show that Council Rodley fully agrees with Councilor Bishopery.
More often than I care to, um, have everybody know.
So I, I love agreeing with her and she does agree with me. I think it's awesome.
All right, Nate. Um, okay, we'll find some more time, um, and then get the rest of the list in front of, in front of folks. So I want to leave people a couple of minutes to use the restroom before we, uh, before we go to the next meeting or stretch your legs or get a refill.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Nate. We're adjourned. We'll be back in three minutes.
The same link, right?
Same, same link? Nope, no.
Same link.
Oh.
Oh, thanks, AJ.
Thank you, AJ. Okay, I'm going to call the regular session of the Springfield City Council to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Counselor Pitts.
Here.
Counselor Mo.
Here.
Counselor Rodley.
Here.
Counselor Stare.
Here.
Counselor Woodrow.
Here.
And Counselor Bishopery.
I'm here. Thank you. All right. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States, America.
Into the republic.
For which it stands.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible.
With liberty.
Liberty and justice for all.
As we begin our meeting tonight, I would like to ask members of the audience who are joining us online to please keep yourselves on mute. Until you are called upon for public testimony. There will be two times this evening designated for public testimony and will be listed as business from the audience and public hearings on the agenda. If you are joining us online with a tablet, smartphone or computer and wish to speak during that time. Please use the raised hand when the, when the agenda item is called. When we call on you, please state your name, in Ward or general location for the record. First item, please.
Mayor, uh, the first item is Springfield upbeat. Uh, we actually have a couple of items tonight under Springfield upbeat. The first being mayor's recognition, police recognition.
Do we have the officers here or Chief Shear wants to, here to introduce the officers?
We'll bring up Chief Shear here in a moment.
Mayor, I think that, uh, Chief Shear's zoom might be frozen, but we will, we will try. We may be having some technical difficulties.
We're doing it live.
Okay, am I here? Can anybody hear me? See me? I apologize. I have some technical difficulty. Um, the last thing I heard was the mayor asking if I had anybody else here. The officer's here. I, I'm not sure. I, we sent out a notification to them. A lot of them don't work till later tonight, so they're not here at work right now. Or might be on days off, but I do believe we have at least a couple of people that are, that are listening in. Um, I missed the whole first part of what the mayor said, so I apologize. I don't know if you read their names or not, but I'm going to go ahead and do that. Um, I know you recognize, are going to recognize Sergeant Wilson, Officer O'Leary, Officer Tanner, Officer Crawford, and Officer Casarez. Um, have you already read the?
No, that one, that was the, that was the next piece, right? The first question was, did, if we had the, if we had them here, we were going to bring them. The first question was, did, if we had the, if we had them here, we were going to bring them up for, for this piece of recognition. So I will go ahead and read the letter that I sent on behalf of the city and the council to these officers and then we'll go ahead and open it up and see if anybody's got any other sort of comments or questions. It's the same letter for all officers, so I'm going to just simply read it once, but I signed this and it was going, it was going out to these officers on behalf of, on behalf of community. So on behalf of the Springfield City Council and Springfield leadership, I wanted to commend you for your exemplary services on November 4th, 2021. Your quick action to assist the University of Oregon helped resolve a dangerous set of circumstances and to protect the campus community. We're incredibly grateful for your assistance and dedication. The details of the events that unfolded on November 4th, 2021 are harrowing. University of Oregon Police Department called Springfield PD to request assistance with a building search pursuant to a report of an unauthorized subject on campus inside the Knight Law Library. SPD quickly responded and requested the dispatch of Officer O'Leary, his canine partner Kirby, to UFO. Upon his arrival, Officer O'Leary learned the campus security determined via surveillance footage that the subject inside the building was armed with a handgun and at the point positioned himself behind a counter while aiming at an entry door. Officer O'Leary requested additional SPD officers to respond for cover as he was searching with canine partner Kirby. SPD officers Crawford, Bazare, Cerez and Wilson responded to provide adequate cover and essential, and enhanced search capability. SPD officers accompanied by additional responding law enforcement agencies located an intruder inside the law enforcement, the Knight Law Library and took him into custody without incident. The subject was armed with a handgun when arrested. UFO police learned that the subject had held several students against their will at gunpoint for a couple of hours prior to being captured. This incident is an example of outstanding, the outstanding partnership SPD has with neighboring law enforcement agencies. It's also an example of dedicated SPD officers having the safety and security of our community. Your helpful and responsive attitude is typical and representative of this department. In face of uncertainty, you answered the call for help as you do it for each and every day. Thank you very much. I'm, I'm going to, Chief, did you want to add anything before I opened it up to see if the council had anything else stand?
Yeah, just real briefly. I know Officer Crawford and Caceres are online. They're with Sergeant Humphreys. They were having some technical difficulties also, but they are listening in. I just want to say thanks on behalf of the SPD for recognizing them. They did a great job that night and this was definitely something that could have been far worse. It was averted largely because of their work. But this isn't the kind of thing that is the one off. They do this kind of work every single night. In fact, they couldn't make it to the award ceremony that night because on their way in, they got, they got sidetracked because we just had a shooting. And through some amazing investigative work, they're able to track down the shooter within an hour. Through some amazing police work, they're able to successfully de-escalate and negotiate this person that had just shot somebody out of his apartment and take him into custody without any kind of incident. So we ask these men and women to go out every single night and do things that I don't think we ask anybody else in society to do. They take on great risks to themselves to do this kind of work and they do it very, very well. And I'm, I'm very proud of every single one of them. So I just want to thank you for, for recognizing them for all that.
Counselor Woodrow.
Well, first I want to give a shout out to Kirby. I always have to recognize the dog. But I just want to say thank you on behalf of us in the community. I recognize it's not an easy job. It's not an easy job when you even consider that that's a job or a career you want. So I, I, I understand the daily, the daily situations that they encounter and this particular group did an amazing job in the early November and I just look forward to even more. Thank you.
Chief.
Uh, we get lots of bad press and this is good press and I'd like to see it mentioned out there more. At the Police Advisory Committee last night, the chief talked about the event. He didn't, he didn't really tell him how really serious it could have been. And so I wish he had done that and I wish the public would also know that eventually. So that's all.
Merely, is your hand still up or did you want, oh, okay. Very good. Anybody else want to add anything? Joe.
I got to jump on the bandwagon. You know that chief. That's some, that's some super great work. That's an extremely stressful situation and working together like that, working with other agencies. I, it's my understanding that they were absolutely not the only, we were not the only agency there helping UFO. EPD and SO was there as well, but you're right. I mean, it could have been super tragic. And without that immediate response and going straight to the problem and resolving it like that was nothing short of miraculous. And so I, my hat's off. It's, it's hard work. It's, and you know, it's like Counselor Mo was saying, it's very few thanks. A lot of people jump up to complain a bitch about things, but I tell you what, you're not going to be calling a janitor when you have someone with a gun in your house. So good work. I commend the police department and continue what you're doing.
Thank you, sir.
Merely, did you have something else?
One more thing, just to respond to Steve. I don't know, I don't know if he follows Facebook very often, but the, the notes that are coming out on Facebook from SPD are really good. I, I, I'm grateful for them. I'm anxious to see as many as they want to put out there. I really appreciate the interaction of things that are going on. We haven't had that before and I really, I really, I see people responding to it and paying attention. And so I, I really like the communication that's coming out on Facebook. It's just, I think it's really good.
Very good. I think Neil, we're ready for the next item.
Okay, the next item, Mayor, is an item that you added. It is recognition of our Economic Development Manager Courtney Griesel and Courtney is here.
All right. So I have again, a, a little bit of a note about some of the great things Courtney's done in her career here. And as many people know, she's leaving us and leaving the nest for bigger and better opportunities that are out there. And we're all so excited and so proud of her as she tries to go out on her own direction. So I'm going to read this and I'll let it, let the council make some comments. Courtney Griesel has spent her career working to bring better, new and better opportunities to, to people in Springfield. Finding, you know, to find innovative ways to foster economic development in the region. Over the last 15 years, she's played a lead role in many of Springfield's most successful projects and has volunteered to handle some of our most significant challenges. Courtney's primary focus has been citywide economic development, business retention, expansion, recruitment, site development and public private partnerships, but that's not only part, that is the only part of her story. Courtney is author of the city's downtown urban renewal plan, a key component of our downtown resurgence and was a contributing author of the Glenwood refinement plan, which will help guide further developments in the Glenwood area. Courtney raised the bar on how local governments can lead targeted existing business outreach. She found new and better ways for the city to foster relationships with local businesses that have the headquarters outside of Oregon and constantly partnered with local industries to help them tell their story. She took a leadership role in advocating for advanced wood products and the jobs that the technology, the technology could bring back to Oregon. For years of work on the subject to earn her, earned her a spot as a keynote speaker for Governor Brown's Oregon Summit on Mast Timber in 2017. She has tackled a wide range of public policy issues, including working as a lead staff to a governor's office Oregon solution designated to provide resources for mobile home park residents impacted by closures. Courtney has been a regular presenter and contributor with the Epic Network, a university and community partnership program that worked, works at a large scale to advance the needs of the community while training the next generation of workforce and leadership. Even while managing multiple important efforts locally and globally, she found ways to give back, leading this city of Springfield's United Way campaign and serving on the United Way Board of Directors among several other volunteer leadership roles. We are incredibly grateful to Courtney for her years of exemplary public service. It is rare to find a level of talent and dedication that Courtney delivers. It's been an honor to work with Courtney and on behalf of the city, of the city in the Springfield community, I wanted to thank you for making a notable difference in the lives of so many. Thank you for allowing us to be part of your journey and the best of luck on your next adventure. Now, the one note I wanted to always add is, you know, in all my time being on council and mayor for the last year, like if I had a problem and didn't know what the answer was, even if she didn't have, like Courtney was the first person I would call. She could at least point us in the right direction and give us really good and sound professional advice and I always really appreciated it. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Merely.
I have mixed emotions. I'm so excited for where you're headed and so excited that people came to you and found you for this position. You weren't out there looking. They came and found you, which to me just exemplifies what we've all said and what we all feel about you and, and how far you've come. The mixed emotions is I'm not going, I'm not going to have your round. It's going to be hard. We've had such a good relationship for the last year and a half to two years to be able to really get the Economic Development Agency in line and directed and with, with something ahead of us in the future. And so I'm, I'm grateful for everything that you put into that, that you, that, that your legacy is there. Besides everything that Sean mentioned, your legacy is there in what we go forward and accomplish as a result of your creating the, the base. And I really appreciate it. And I'm, I'm looking forward to at least being able to call and say, hey, what do you think? And meeting you for coffee. So, but thank you. You have just been a gem. Thank you very much.
Cory.
So I refuse to think that I'm not going to get to work with Courtney in other ways and other places. And I've already said that to her, that I'm just sure that we will find another way to work together. I also have just, I've deeply appreciated getting to work with you in so many different ways. And one of my fondest memories is, and fond in that it was, it was painful and hard, was actually working on a video for United Way together last year and working to unpack a lot of really hard things. And I've told people before that some of my, my favorite relationships are bonded in conflict and challenge. And I think of you that way and that we've done some hard things together. And so I know that we will get to work together in future. And the city of Springfield is so much better off for your work and your talent and your tenacity and many of the things that you have endured on behalf of public service. And I appreciate that and just consider you sort of a sister in the trenches. So I appreciate you. I wish you the very best. And I just know we're going to continue to work together. So thank you.
Joe.
Courtney. So alls I can say, well, I mean, I, I can, I concur with everything that's been said, but I'm going to add is that when you were coming on board and you're like, you know, okay, she's going to replace John T. And I'm like, oh my gosh. And people are all such big shoes to fill. And oh my gosh, I don't know how she's going to do this. And yeah, it's, it's like, you know, the city was going to, you know, have to take three steps back and one step forward type thing, but you proved that all to be wrong completely. You have set the pace. You have created your own path. You've got your own shoes that are going to be really hard to fill, I think, with a greater challenge than JT's was ever. So you, you, you set the bar so high. I love JT. Don't get me wrong, but you set, you set the bar. I can name, I'm, well, maybe I can't name all the different projects that you had your fingers in and continue to have your fingers in all more often than not in the background without asking for recognition, without, it's, it's a selfless service that you have placed a community over your own, even your own personal wellbeing and personal space and all. You, you made it family, you know? So I wish you nothing but the best and I continue to, you can, we'll, we'll stay in touch, but nothing but the best.
Leonard.
Well, Courtney, I've never doubted in the least that you've always had the city's best interests at heart. I, we've occasionally differed on how to get there, but I've always known that you are somebody who believed in Springfield and Springfield was in good hands under your watch and the private sector better watch out. So good luck to you.
Jamie.
First of all, I mean, it's definitely been a pleasure working with you. I'm glad I got to briefly see at one of my meetings with, with Nancy and I'm glad we actually got to see that we were both real people. But before you go, I really need to see a transcript of the phone call that you made to Popeyes. Other than that, I mean, good luck. You know, I still owe you a pound cake or some Memphis barbecue or something. Hold me to it. And I, I know you do the good things. And if you decide to run for government in 2030 something, I probably won't be here, but you know, you, you have my vote.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll open the mic for you Courtney, if you have anything you want to say. Otherwise, we, we can bring you back up for Sita a little bit later.
Ah, she's got to say something. Come on.
Does my sound okay?
Yeah.
Um, I still have a month to work on that Popeyes. So you just see what I can do here over the holidays. I, I have to say that I am filled with absolute gratitude. I would not be the person I am today if it weren't for this community, for all of you and, and for the councils that came before as well. And you know, I merely, I think about John and, and so I just, I am grateful for the person the community has made me. And I think it's a once in a lifetime to get to work for a community like Springfield. And I say it often that Springfield is a place where amazing people are quietly doing really amazing things. And I just, I will be your loudest fan from the stands now. Someone will be loud on your behalf because there is just greatness ahead. And it has been a true privilege to have the honor of getting to do this work. It's been a challenge every single day, but it's a community that deserves it. And so I just, I look forward to seeing what's ahead and I will not be far. And you have a fan. I'm very appreciative, appreciative of all of you. And our leadership team, I got to say, you got an amazing group of people at the city. So just honored.
Good luck. We really do wish you the best and hopefully you'll find, find the way back to us eventually someday. All right, Neil, next item, please.
Oh, the next item is the consent calendar.
Steve.
There I am. Okay, I make a motion that we approve the consent calendar.
Thank you.
All right. So we have a motion for Mo and a second from Counselor Pictionary. Neil, could you call the roll, please?
Yes, Counselor Pitts.
Hi.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Stare.
Hi.
Counselor Woodrow.
Yes.
And Counselor Pictionary.
All right. Motion passes. Six yeses and no, zero nos. Next item, please.
Next item is the public hearings. You have one public, two public hearings this evening. The first one is fiscal year 22 supplemental budget to and appropriations transfer resolution number two, a resolution adjusting resources and requirements in the following funds. Special revenue, street capital and authorizing the transfer of appropriations within the general fund from contingency expense to city manager's office operating expense and from contingency expense to human resources operating expense. Neil Obringer is here for the staff report.
Yes. Good, good evening, Mayor and Council. As Neil said, this is the second supplemental budget of the year. Really includes three main items. Those items are the addition of FTE, one in HR and one in the city manager's office to address staffing needs in those departments. Second is recognition of the first federal ARPA payment and receipt of those dollars into reserves. And the third is recognition of grant revenues from the Oregon Department of Transportation to support the LED lighting portion of the pedestrian safety improvements that you discussed earlier with Brian Burnett and team. So staff tonight requested the council hold a public hearing. I'm also happy to take any questions. Um, so staff tonight requested the council hold a public hearing. Um, I'm also happy to take any questions uh at any time. Are there any questions? All right, I'm gonna going to open the public hearing and anybody that's interested to comment specifically to this item, please raise your hand and we will bring you up.
And uh, Mayor, I'm not seeing any hands raised. We'll give them one more moment. But I do not see anything.
All right, then I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and. All right, Steve.
Ready? Okay, I make a motion that we adopt the uh resolution number two.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Counselor Mo and a second from Counselor Pictionary. Uh, Neil, could you call the roll, please?
Yes, Counselor Pitts.
Hi.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Stare.
Hi.
Counselor Woodrow.
Yes.
And Counselor Pictionary.
All right.
All right, the motion passes six to zero. Uh, next item, please.
Next item is your second public hearing. It's election results municipal code amendments. This ordinance number one amending Springfield Municipal Code Section two point two seven five related to the proclamation of election results. And our Assistant City Attorney Christina Kraz is here for the staff report.
Thank you, Neil. Um, good evening, Mayor and Council. I am bringing this item to you tonight as a somewhat housekeeping item. Code modernization item and hopefully help you stop signing documents every election cycle that um. That AJ works really hard to collect all your signatures on, but isn't a state requirement, so. Um, the purpose of this code update is to amend the section of municipal code. That deals with how election results are announced and reported for the city of Springfield. So these are election results related to the election of candidates as well as the um results of. Ballot measures, either voter initiated initiatives or referendums or um city ballot measures that we put forward like our bond. Measures most commonly. Currently, the municipal code references a proclamation of a board of canvassers, which the city council has um acted as for the past. Unknown number of decades. It requires um the city recorder to prepare a proclamation. It's voted on by the council and then signed by each counselor. As well as a proclamation by the mayor that is also signed by the mayor. That procedure seems to stem from very, very, very old state law that goes back about a hundred years. I couldn't find any. More recent reference to Board of Canvassers than about nineteen twenty. Um, current election law places most of those duties on the city's elections official, which is our city recorder per our code and charter. And so the proposed code amendments essentially streamline the procedures so that the council is still receiving those election results. Through a proclamation of the city recorder. Um, and then you can review that in a public meeting. Um, but you would not need to vote on that or um individually all sign off on that since elections would be governed by the what the state law. Um, requires and our charter allows us to follow state law for anything, you know, specifically adopt another procedure by ordinance. So this would be consistent with the city charter. Um, this is a public hearing and first reading, so there's no vote tonight. And I'm happy to answer any questions um before or after the public hearing, depending on your preference.
Are are there any questions? All right, then I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. And if you're interested in commenting this item to this item, please raise your hand. All right, I don't see anybody, Neil.
Mayor, I don't see anyone either, and there's no action requested on this item. It's a first reading.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and then we are going to move on since no, it's a first reading. Um, next item, please.
Next item is business from the audience.
Um, okay, we're gonna bring up business from the audience. Um, if you're interested in speaking, please raise your hand. Neil, you can go ahead and start bringing people up when you're ready.
You got it, Mayor. Our first speaker is Judy Smith, followed by Joe Tecotley. And Judy, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Good evening, City Council. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Well, my name is Judy Smith and I am the Lane County Area Representative for Home Share Oregon. And I'm here just to get on public record that Home Share Oregon is here. Um, and we bring the classic community tradition of home sharing into the modern age. Springfield faces big challenges, including the lack of affordable housing. Housing insecurity for marginalized populations and providing other housing-related services. Home Share Oregon is a new nonprofit that is providing a way for people of all ages and lifestyles. To find a safe, compatible housemate to build community and prevent homelessness before it starts. Home Share Oregon offers a special partnership with SilverNest, an online app. That provides a secure matching process to help you find the right person with which to share your home. When you sign up for this resource through Home Share Oregon, we pay the fees for this service. And we're with you every step of the way, including assistance creating right renter profiles and house listings. Landlord tools and templates and background checks for both parties. Home Share Oregon is also planning to build a homeowner rapid response program. Designed to recruit and train homeowners willing to provide housing for families displaced due to a natural disaster. This is a proactive response, so our community can be ready in case of wildfires or other catastrophes. You know, there are over a million and a half empty spare rooms in our state. And we view it as an underused housing resource. If we can match people for just two percent of those rooms. That would equal housing for thirty thousand people without an increase in our taxes. We sup- we seek support from the city of Springfield to help us decrease barriers to home sharing. And incentivize homeowners to join the home sharing movement. We encourage the residents of Springfield to visit our website at home share oregon.org. And find out if home sharing is right for you. Thank you very much.
Mayor, our next speaker is Joe Tecotley and Joe, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Great. Can everyone hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. Uh, this business is a continuing business, not necessarily a new business. Uh, Mayor Van Gordon, council members, my name is Joe Tecotley. I reside at eight, six, seven, four, five RR Baker Road in Springfield. I'm the owner and operator of several businesses on Main Street. I've been involved in the Main Street Safety Project for almost eight years, just as long as Merrily. And have served on the Strategic Advisory Committee for this project as well. This evening, you had a work session updating you on the Main Street Safety Project and the next phase for public hearings. The city staff presented uh that a public engagement plan has been underway for several years and it has. Uh, to educate the public about this project. Unfortunately, the feedback that has that was received represents very small segment of this community, if any. The resident, the residents of the city have no clue about what to happen, what's about to happen to their street, to their main street. When asked, they always respond, what are you talking about? This is a major project that involves seven miles of Main Street with nine roundabouts and a block center lane. Which will disrupt the lives and movement of everyone who travels this corridor. Not to mention that this devastation and negative impact to hundreds of businesses along this route. The city staff and the consultants hired to run this project have done nothing but to manipulate this process. Claiming they have checked all the boxes before they come to you for approval. I urge you as elected representative of the people of the city to do your own due diligence. Please go out and ask residents, what do they know about the Main Street Safety Project? And then you'll find out for yourself that this may not be the wishes of most of these people that live and travel this corridor. I really urge you to do that. I know I've got plenty of time yet to talk about um this, but. I'm very passionate about it. I spend a lot of time. I respect what you guys are doing very much and the staff. Good job, but at the same time, the feedback that the community they've collected from the community is inadequate. You need to go back and make sure the community is aware of what's going to happen to their street. Thank you so much for your time.
And Mayor, it appears we have no other hands up for business from the audience. Uh, we do have one that has come up. The next speaker is Kevin Shaper and Kevin, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Hi, I'm Kevin Shaper, Ward Six. Uh, I wanted to uh measure a couple of things related to Main Street. First, I just wanted to um recognize. The deaths of the children on Main Street. Uh, John Alexandra Day, who was eight years old. Mackenzie Bay Hudson was five years old and Tyler James Hudson, who was four years old. And uh, uh, the last commenter talked about recognizing devastation and I think you can't get more devastating than their deaths. And then uh. The traffic engineer, um, this is on a whole different level, mentioned the the how unsafe it would be to mix. Pedestrians and bikes uh in a twelve and a half foot space that would be created by combining the um. The bike lane and the sidewalk. And I just want to point out that the EWEB and Rosa Parks paths are nine feet wide. And the West D and Mill Race path paths are ten feet wide. Um, so I I just, I I don't know what was up with that answer, but that doesn't, that doesn't pass the spill test. And then, of course, the idea that um the bike lane would be used for carrying freight. I can't imagine what's gonna happen to uh someone who's using the bike lane on a bike while oversized freight is driving in it. So I I think that's a a real design problem. But thank you.
Mayor, it appears we have no more speakers in the queue.
Is there any council response? Leonard. Leonard, you may have turned your camera off instead of turning mute off. All right, we're gonna go with Mary Lee first while and give Leonard a chance to troubleshoot his problems.
Um, I just wanted to say I appreciate Joe's comments. Uh. I would love to see, I don't think anybody feels like we don't want to hear from everybody. It is a common problem with it, whatever we do to try to get a community response that's community-wide. Um, we've got a community of sixty thousand people. We've probably got, what, forty thousand, thirty-five to forty thousand adults? We would be happy to have comments coming in from them in regards to Main Street and the corridor. Um, I don't really, I I personally, my personal opinion, I don't feel like our staff has ignored getting comments from the community. Um, but I know how tough it is, no matter what we've dealt with, to try to get a across-the-board response from folks. I don't know what the answer is. Uh, if somebody has an answer, I'd be, I'd love to hear it. Of how to get it, how to reach out and get more response, but I know they've spent the last two to three years. Trying to reach out in all different directions. Um, so I, like I said, I appreciate what Joe's saying and I. And I understand his concerns and I had said earlier in work session, I started out as a hard sell on this. Um, and I'm I'm I they're still, I'm still watching the process, so. I just wanted to respond to that that I. I'd love to have a way or figure out a way to be able to get a larger community response in any area that we've got a question about or have have want it. And if anybody has a system or has a way to do that, I'd love to, I'd love to to hear what their ideas are.
Honor. Yep, thanks, Mayor. Um, I'd like to just chime in um on behalf of what Counselor Woodrow just said. Um, civic engagement is a two-way street. We um just heard from members of the public tonight on this issue. I welcomed that input. Thank you for both speaking up. And in April, there's going to be another opportunity for a public forum on this uh Main Street project, so. Please tell all your friends um who are going to be affected by this project. That they'll have an ample opportunity to speak up and please encourage them. Thank you.
Right, anybody else? All right, next item.
Mayor, the next item is any business from the council.
Is there any other? Steve.
Yep. See, what are we doing here? Am I on? Okay.
You were on.
Oh, okay, okay. Uh, kind of forgot what I was gonna say now. One thing is, uh, I was in San Francisco last week and I saw some some ideas on how they control traffic and. Traffic, high-speed traffic in some neighborhoods. I like those. And I've been working on this West D Street situation we have over here. We have a permit solution coming up. It's gonna be years before that's done. In the meantime, we need to to put up some temporary measures that will last and. And not just talk about it. We need to do it. And and Summit Boulevard also up the hill. Uh, so I uh. I've got, I got some pictures. I'm gonna talk to, hopefully talk to some staff about that, see if I can get something moving on that. And uh, so on to one other thing, Glenwood. My ward goes from Tenth Street to I five. Glenn was in that ward. There's Glenwood Water District, which provides fire protection and street lights for everything from the city limits to I five. Well, the Water District Board meeting last week voted to. Change all street lights to LEDs. Water District's gonna do that. And so. That's a step forward for a community that supports Springfield, and I want everybody to know that.
All right, um, anybody else? All right, I had one quick item. Uh, we we've got one more meeting before it's winter break. Um, and since it's the beginning of the uh, it's since it's the beginning of the calendar year, there is an option. To reassign committee assignments for the year. I know people have a um, some assignments that don't work with their schedule or maybe. Maybe areas that they're not interested in. Please, if you want to move committee assignments, now would be the time to get your piece of. Um, input in if you want to call me or text me. Um, and then we can move some move some spots around. All right, next item, please.
The next item is business from the city manager. Item number one, the CDBG CV Funds for Human Services. And Aaron Feifield is here for the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Uh, I'm here tonight uh with the recommendation from the Community Development Advisory Committee. On how to distribute a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in community development block grant coronavirus relief funds. I might refer to them as CDBG CV funds. Um, as you may recall, in the spring, the council decided to allocate these funds. To provide direct services to the unhoused community in Springfield as a response to the coronavirus. Staff subsequently issued a request for proposals and received responses from two local nonprofits who are working with this population in Springfield. Those two nonprofits, Catholic Community Services and Carry It Forward. Uh, Catholic Community Services request. Um, is to support a portable shower trailer to serve homeless families with children that'd be in their parking lot for one year. While the addition to their building for the Oasis Day Center is being built. So they have a planned shower for that population in the future, but until that happens. Um, they're requesting that a shower trailer be able to serve that population. Um, carry it forward, uh, put forward a number of ideas and projects to serve this population. Uh, some of which don't quite align with the HUD requirements, so um I put forward the ones that do that are eligible. Um, you'll see those there. The three projects are um essentially operating a program for emergency motel vouchers. For inclement weather, so someone, if it is too cold, folks sometimes aren't actually able to go to Eagan or have a condition. That would be better served for a motel indoor space than a congregate space. Um, so having Carry It Forward managed that program. Uh, so motel vouchers, they also had a proposal to provide support for when someone is camping out in an RV on public streets. Um, but that RV breaks down, so to be able to troubleshoot, to make sure that RV can move within that forty-eight hour timeframe. Um, rather than the. rather than the risk of them being towed and having all their possessions, possessions be taken. And then that third request from Carry It Forward is actually for street outreach and case management to be provided to folks living outside. The caveat to that is that that is a program, actually, where Lain County is leading that effort regionally. And so if that was something you wanted to support, it would actually be, we would allocate those funds to Lain County to manage, and then they would distribute those funds to a local nonprofit. We would not manage that program ourselves. I do want to highlight, these are one-time funds. These are from the CARES Act. So, you know, CDBG actually usually caps the number, the amount of funds we can put toward human services. And through the CARES Act, they sort of HUD sort of lifted the cap. And so we, we, we're in this unique position to provide these funds toward human services in a way that we haven't in the past, but also in a way we won't in the future. So that's recognizing staff's capacity to manage a new program. So where does that lead us? So on November tenth, the Community Development Advisory Committee met to review these applications and hear from the applicants, and they put forward a recommendation that you see in your packet. They did support each of those projects, but you can see the amounts listed there totaling up to a hundred and eighty-five thousand. So happy to answer any questions.
Joe?
Yes, thank you very much. So you're talking about, this seems like it's a an opportunity or window of opportunity to use these funds, where otherwise we would not be able to use funds for this purpose, correct?
Correct.
So we have the funds, what would they have been used for?
So this was a new federal program that, sorry, maybe I'll let you.
Is this, is this new money, or is this something that's, that's we're pulling out of some savings account somewhere?
It's new money. It's new money through the CARES Act under President Trump that Congress awarded. So it's sort of rather get a new program to say, let's add it to the eligibility of the existing CDBG program and give that money to existing entitlement communities.
That's new, new coming in?
It's new coming in, and it's one time. Yeah.
And then, out of curiosity, don't have to really like nail it down to, but how in the world did it come up with seventeen thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars to fix RVs?
Those are staff costs. So it's not money to pay to actually fix the RVs. They're, they're tapping a different source for that. This is the staff cost.
Staff is charged, we're, they're getting, we're getting charged seventeen thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars for staff to determine if an RV needs to be fixed?
They're.
I mean, I don't know where the money's going.
Yeah, the proposal is for staff, a, to be able to go out to an RV and sort of talk with that owner about figuring, like troubleshooting the issue, and then sort of helping them essentially get on their way. I will say the program, like all of the other federal programs, it's a reimbursement basis. So if the program doesn't end up sort of spending that money, we won't get charged for it, but that would be the limit that they're asking for.
Okay, so I, you know, just trying to figure out how that number would come up, but yes, and I understand it's to reimburse staff time. And I don't know how much that, how much time that seventeen-six represents. So just, it just looked odd to me. So, all right.
Mary Lee?
I had a question in regards to the motel vouchers. Is this in correlation with or in addition to what the county does, what HSC does?
This would be in addition to. So the HSC, this, I have it exact given that it's like multimillion dollar budget that they have, but I haven't really seen the HSC have a motel voucher budget. Like, I know Catholic Community Services has a motel voucher budget for families with children, so like cold weather, for example, but my understanding is that those are private donations that are funding that.
You know. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, in this case, my understanding is that there are a number of single adults that sometimes, let's say during a cold weather spell, that Eagan is not a, is not a good fit for in that congregate setting, and they may have a medical issue, or they may be released from the hospital, but it might be sort of during an inclement weather spell. And so if you could be able to put them in a hotel for a couple of nights before releasing them to the street, this is where Carry It Forward is requesting funds to sort of offer.
My memory could be wrong, and I'm not saying, and I'm saying it could very well be wrong, but I remember discussing this in HSC meeting sometime in the past year, where there was money set aside for motel vouchers, and we actually ended up with leftover that we didn't use them all. If, if, if my memory is serving correctly, that's why I was curious as if, would they be correlating with, you know, Lain County's awareness of the need, or how would they know, and how would they choose people that would need the vouchers? Where would they get the recommendations from? For, for the vouchers?
Um, that's a good question. Um, it was like I could dig into the application right now. I mean, my understanding from Carry It Forward is that the need is great, whoever their population that they worked with last year, I guess, was not necessarily tied in. If there were other sources like you're referencing, we're not able to tap those. And so they were struggling to find. I know, my understanding of talking to City Manager's Office is that we, we were using, I think FEMA money last winter to help pay for emergency motel vouchers for that population, and the FEMA money is not available this winter. I, it would not surprise me if, if not everything was coordinated, if there was a need that the county was experiencing, and also there was a population in another part of the county that either was not aware of or was not eligible for or something. But my understanding from these, we're only talking about members of the population who are currently unhoused. And so therefore, I would, I would, I think the argument is there as far as the need. But that would be a Carry It Forward managing that program to decide population is.
Okay.
Cory?
Okay, I have, I have a few thoughts, and I'm probably gonna start with a question. So I heard you say that this is all going to be, this is reimbursed, right? So we, we have to be for this staffing or this projects or whatever, we're gonna be basically billed for it or whatever, right? Is that what you said?
Right. They, they, they spend it on an eligible use, submit invoices, we reimburse them, and then conversely, we go back to HUD. We submit our requests, they reimburse us.
Okay, so is this, is this increasing any sort of staff time on our part? Like, do we need increased capacity to be able to do this in addition to other funding?
A great question. Go ahead.
Buckle up, I have more.
Do you have, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah. Do we, are we gonna have to expand our capacity to be able to do this?
Yeah, I think that's, I mean, I'm definitely noticing that, like, there are other, yeah, there are other CDBG projects I, that are on my list that I wish I could get to quicker when other, other issues are popping up. I think that's where the stress of like trying to make sure we are not creating a new program ourselves, but we are managing ones that that can exist in a way. And so when we're talking about motel vouchers, or we're talking about partnering with the county and having them administer street outreach. Yeah, it's, so in, as part of your spring, like in the spring, it's a greater question to council as far as these funds are concerned, and part of that included about twenty thousand dollars for additional staff time. It doesn't increase staff, but it increases the reimbursement. Yeah, I think the coronavirus has put a lot of pressure on a lot of different things, and this population is that, and how we serve them has created an increased need for them, but also an increased need on, on how we deliver services. So that's.
Yeah.
Story.
Um, I think, and this is probably, I mean, I'm just gonna guess, because we're this government, that there's probably these, these rules that are making us do this a certain way. And normally, I, I'm, I'm just all for, you know, getting funds to organizations for staffing. And in this particular case, I have concerns that this is short-term, one-time funding in a market where all of our nonprofit organizations and agencies are having a really hard time finding staffing anyway. So I'm like, oh, we're gonna end up with doing a lot of work for unspent money. So there's that. So my, my, my dream would be, if there was any way to just like, say, yes, you do good work, yes, we're just gonna allocate this funding to you, and it doesn't have to be done on a reimbursement basis, basically like, you said you're gonna do this, come back and do this. So I'm trying to think of like, how, how do we move the funds to where they can be the most useful? And how do we watch out for, you know, sucking up a bunch of our staff time so we can't get to other things and projects that we need to do? And how do we watch out for, you know, investing in staffing that may never get to where it is that we want to go? So I don't know if that's helpful, because you're probably gonna say I can't do any of those things, but that's just from my personal experience of like, how, how do we do this in the most efficient way?
No, I think that's a great point of like, especially what we're hearing during the Human Services Commission, those monthly meetings about limited staff, the, the turnover in staff, like all of, you know, the, the greater need, the more challenges people are facing. I, I would say in these, I, that is a broader picture that certainly we will still continue to see in the social service world. I would say for these particular projects in this AIS, our trailer for homeless families, CCS has been operating that with the help of FEMA funds for the last year. They've, they are managing that, they have been paying for that, or they've been managing the payment. That funding ended in June, and then they came back through this opportunity to ask for funds. So in that sense, we have a, you know, I mean, so it's these little things like, okay, that's a known entity, they've done this. They're using their own staff to do that. Carry It Forward, in many ways, has actually been doing a lot of this work with volunteers. And so they, they have current, after current folks available to do this work. It's a matter of like formally onboarding them with that process. I do think in that case, there is some risk here, where we're talking about the need for increased capacity in the nonprofit side, and we're talking about federal funds. I think there's a balance there, wanting to create increased capacity, but also recognizing there's a risk when you do that with folks who haven't maybe worked with federal funds before. So that's a reality, but I can, Carry It Forward does have some experience. They are building that capacity, and they're certainly prioritizing working in Springfield, which is something we heard during the application process.
Okay. That's all really helpful. And one last question. If the money goes, goes unspent, or if they're unable to, you know, submit for it, how long do we have to then turn it over and reallocate it? Do we have a window of time that we have to spend this money?
Yeah, we do. It's actually generous as far as some of these funds are concerned. So we actually have until December twenty twenty-three that these, it's kind of this bigger picture of like eighty percent of these funds need to be spent by then, and then we have another three years to spend the additional. I mean, it's hard because it's a response to a pandemic. So it's, it's a little bit of trying to figure out how to get the funds spent for what's needed, when, while, you know, balancing, there's so many other funds out there that are trying to do the same thing. But, so we'll have two years. I know I'm already gonna come back to you with, with another ask to reallocate some other funds, so that, that'll just be part of this reality for now.
Okay. So we're, we're gonna do a little bit of a time check, because we are right now fifteen minutes over for our next meeting. So Leonard or Steve, if you can just sort of keep it narrow to, you know, if questions about the specific item, and then if we have questions about CDBG or response, maybe we can just take those generic questions, you know, offline. Steve?
I'll be quick. I'm, I'm the council rep to CDAC Committee. That's a great committee, by the way. The Carry It Forward ask on the RVs. You know, every RV out there, we, everything we hear is, there's no houses, there's no houses, no homes. It's years and years and years. Every RV out there is a house for somebody. And we need, we need to take care of those. And, and their ask was seventeen thousand, six hundred and eighty to take care of non-working RVs on the street. As far as I could tell, it's completely underfunded. And if, in the long run, somewhere down the road, I would like to see them get more money for that item. And I think it's justified.
All right. Steve, do you have a motion, or is there any more discussion about, about the item?
Well, I was, I was, I don't, I don't even know where to take it from. I just, I was hoping maybe some of the other committee members would agree with me, and we could.
Yep. I, I agree with Counselor Mo. Carry It Forward makes every nickel count, and I think that the full, the, the full amount that they're being, that they're asking for is richly warranted.
Well, they're, they're asking for seventeen thousand, six hundred and eighty for their, their, their working RV part. I'd like to add ten thousand of that and take it out of one of the others, such as the, actually, the street outreach case management resources. That money was money that we, that we could not let them spend in another way. So it's going to the county. And so maybe, maybe if we took ten thousand out of that and put it in the RV situation, I'd like, I'd make a motion that we do that.
Uh, is there a second?
I second.
Thank you.
Aaron?
I guess I just want to caution, like, they didn't ask for more money for that program. They asked for seventeen thousand, six hundred and eighty. So without having worked with, I guess that'll be my statement. They asked for.
I could.
Before her statements, I'd like to have discussion on the motion first.
Well, yeah, and that's, and then, Joe?
Thank you. So correct me if I'm wrong. We just discussed this. I just asked about that money. That is money paying for staff to look at the RVs. It's not the money to fix the RVs. The money to fix the RVs is coming from a different source, which is not part and parcel of this request. I'm not sure how we split from that. But the request is covering that, and the money that they're getting for those repairs are from a completely different source. So I won't be supporting that motion.
Is there any other, is there any other discussion? Okay, before we call the vote, I would recommend, right, like, if they don't have enough funds for this, right, we're gonna have plenty of CDBG money that's coming back up, so there may be another bite at, bite at the apple. So it's been moved and seconded to reallocate ten thousand dollars from the street outreach program to Carry It Forward?
Mayor?
Yeah.
The move, the motion hasn't been withdrawn, and it was been seconded, so we can't move, it has to be modified based on the motion he made.
No, I understand. He, his motion was to take ten thousand dollars from the street outreach and, right? Right? And that's what, that's what I just read. His motion was.
I'm sorry. So we're, this is a vote on, this is a vote on his modified motion other than what we've got.
Yeah, this is a vote to take ten thousand dollars off of the street outreach program and move it to Carry It Forward. And then we'll deal with the whole group.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for clarifying it. All right. Neil, can you call the role?
Yes, Counselor Pitts.
All right.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
No.
Counselor Stare.
I.
Counselor Woodrow.
No.
Counselor Pictionary.
No.
I believe that is a tie leaving Mayor Van Gordon.
Uh, I don't know.
I tried.
And, and Steve, I, I think we should act, like, keep in contact with Carry It Forward. If they, if this program needs a longer discussion, we can do that.
I listened to this presentation. They're doing wonderful stuff, so I really support them.
Yeah. Okay, I will now entertain a motion to, to, to adopt the item.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the presentation, and I forget, have to even call it now, CBD fund funds. You're allocated a hundred and eighty-five thousand. Sorry, I don't even know what to call it, but that's what I want to propose.
Counselor Mo, if you don't mind, I'd be happy to read that motion. I have it in front of me here.
Please.
Yes, the emotion would be to approve the amendments, the CDCDAC's recommended allocation of CDBGCV funds for human services.
I see it, I see it to bottom now. I didn't see it before.
Okay, second. All right. It's been moved and seconded to adopt the CDAC recommended allocations. Neil, could you call the role, please?
Yes, Counselor Pitts.
I.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Stare.
I.
Counselor Woodrow.
Yes.
And Counselor Pictionary.
I.
Motion passes six to zero. Next item, please.
Any other business from the city manager?
No further business, thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Any business from the city attorney's office?
No business.
And I'm going to adjourn this, uh, meet, regular session meeting, and then we are going to reconvene. And then we are going to reconvene on a different link for the CETA executive session. So we will see you in under a minute. We are adjourned. Thank you.